Okay, welcome everyone. Today is Monday, September 8th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chair Roman Kurzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public 1, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file. The Board Secretary, official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me. Just five.
I will now take roll call. James Bonanno is absent this evening. Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is absent this evening. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Jen Souter?
Here.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Here.
Bob Zuckerman is absent this evening. Kathy McLaughlin?
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Here.
And Chairwoman Kurzak?
Here.
All right, the first item up is that we have a resolution for 1201 Memorial Drive. From what I understand, all the modifications have been made that have been requested by all the planning board members and professionals. Can I get a motion to approve it?
Second.
What? Is that a second?
I'm sorry. Daniel made the motion. Who seconded it?
A second.
A second, Kathy. Okay. Okay, eligible members. John Moore?
Yes.
Barbara Kurzak?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Daniel Shenemeo?
Yes.
Katherine McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Mike Gunnin?
Yes.
We have a second resolution for 607 and 611 Civil Avenue. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Eligible members, Barbara, Chairwoman Kurzak?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mike Gunnin?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Katherine McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Bob Zuckerman is absent.
All right, today we have an application, 700 Monroe Avenue. Excellent.
Andrew Carrison, we have a 700 Monroe Avenue Realty LLC. Just want to go through a little bit of the history of why we're here tonight for an amended application. Property in question is at 700 Monroe Avenue. It's block 2503, lots 1 to 5. And I have to excuse myself, I forgot my eyeglasses, so I got to keep my paddle a little bit further away. So far, so good. Thank you, though. The property is in the Main Street redevelopment area in the community shopping district. As the Board may recall, back in February 2024, preliminary and final site plan approval had been granted for the project to construct the five-story mixed-use building on the site. Provides for 52 residential units that included 11 affordable units with UHAC controls, 26 parking spaces, inclusive of six EV spaces, and 986 square feet of commercial space. UC variances were granted along with the application as well as design deviations. Reason that we're here tonight. My client is having a tough time, as are a lot of developers, trying to get this project built. That's just, there's no other way to say. There are 52 units that are in there. The tough thing is trying to get these projects to pencil out with affordable units in there, in particular low and the very low. One thing I want to say, I'm a huge proponent of affordable housing. I've been involved in numerous lawsuits to compel affordable housing throughout the state. We're not looking not to build affordable housing. I think it's crucial, I think it's needed, and it should be part of the fabric of Asbury Park. Problem is trying to get to a middle ground where we can build the project, where we can actually construct it and build units and actually have affordable units in there. Because if we can't build the project, unfortunately, you're not going to get any housing, whether it's market rate or affordable, when there is such a significant demand right now for all types of housing. So, the application that we're here for tonight is to try to do something to modify the affordable units that we have in it. One thing I want to say, the project approval provided for 20%, and it was 11, and actually because the math comes out to 10.4, it should have been 10 units, and you round down the .4 that was not done, but irrespective, we'll work with that. I'm going to have two witnesses testify tonight, my client, Alan Nick, and also Obi, who's been here on numerous occasions. The application that we're seeking to do tonight is to increase the number of units within the building to help offset some of the affordable unit costs. So, we are proposing 56 units. We're willing to keep, we can do the 11 affordable, we're hoping to be able to do moderate. The low and the very low become difficult. So, we're looking to do the moderate, but offset all the affordable units by increasing the number of units. We also have some other options that we're trying to work with to get this project going, to be able to actually break ground at some point and build this project. But with that being said, what I want to do is, I'm going to call Alan up first, my client, testify as to really why we're here, what we're trying to accomplish, and then I'll have Obi come up and testify as to a little bit of the revised layout, the interior layout with the number of units.
If you don't mind, can we, I don't know if, Jack, if this is the right time, can we get an explanation for the planning board members?
Yes.
What is going on? Meaning, what will happen tonight and what has happened?
Okay, originally, the project was approved.
Correct.
It should enter the resolution of approval as a city exhibit or board exhibit B1, if you have. The original membership, this application was only voted on by five members back then, okay? And from the format, I believe Jeff may have handled this resolution because it's not my format, okay? But it was Mayor Moore, Jim Henry, Yvonne, Jennifer, and Erica, who's gone. So, I had already spoken to Mr. Carrison, going, "Look, anything that's a couple of years old, all ready to board members, we actually, we want to hear about it from scratch, essentially." Even though I get it, this is a 11-page, 10-page resolution, so there was a whole lot that the Board did to work with the applicant to give them approvals. So, basically, although it's an amendment, I want everybody to hear it as much as you can, because we wouldn't be able to get a quorum if we didn't have the new members. Other than that, your variances are the same.
That is correct.
No, they're not?
No.
Okay.
There's new variants.
There's new, okay, so there might be some new relief requested, okay? But still, basically, it's a very similar project, just in some changes.
So, how does it work that, okay, we already have a resolution?
Yes.
That happened?
Right.
And now there's something new coming up? So, how does that happen? Does that old resolution stand?
Yes.
So, that one stands with an overlay of this?
Yeah.
Whatever this is.
May have approved or not. If you approve it, we just amend the project to add the new sections. And if there's any additional variances that have to be granted, or even the old ones are affected, I'm going to put a catch-all phrase in, because any time you're changing anything in the zoning ordinances that had a variance, it's technically required to have variance, it's all reaffirmation of the old variance. But there's no need to go from scratch. You don't start from the start and redo the whole project.
But is there, is there any, if someone, if something came up and we said, "You know what? Maybe we didn't mean to okay that in that prior resolution," can we say that, or that's done? That's done?
Basically, it's done. It's been granted, it's done.
Just anything that impact, whatever changes are here, that might impact any of those decisions?
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay.
That I agree with.
Great.
One thing I also want to mention, you hear a lot about what's going on in the state because you have the fourth round of affordable housing. And under the new statute in the state that controls affordable housing, municipalities were given their obligation what it was. There is no obligation in Asbury Park in the fourth round for affordable housing. As I indicated before, even though there is no obligation in the fourth round, I still think the fact that Asbury requires it, I think it's a good thing. I think it's a commendable thing, and I think it's needed. So, even though there's not a fourth round obligation, I do think, and I do believe, that the affordable obligation that the city has should obviously continue. It's a matter of trying to work with it and work within the confines of the affordable project or affordable units within the project to get this thing going. With that being said, I have--
Okay. Got another question. Can I ask you something?
Yeah, sure.
Well, this, how about, how much is going to be the taxation? Is there going to be a pilot payment on this?
We're going to have to apply for a pilot.
Will you be exempt from school taxes?
Well, that's a misnomer, and I'll tell you why. When you say exempt from school taxes, there is no obligation to pay school taxes when you do a pilot, because the way of regular taxes, they get split up. A pilot, it's not. Municipality has, they can do what they want. There's no money going to the county, and then the municipality is getting the pilot payments, and then they can make a determination what to do. But it's not set aside, that is correct, it's not set aside for the school district, that is correct.
Another question. Is this done under a special redevelopment zone, or is this done because it's affordable?
No, this is in the redevelopment, the Main Street redevelopment area. It has--
That's why you do the pilot?
Because, yes, that is correct. And there is, within that redevelopment area, there's an affordable obligation. We're looking for a variance on, you know, to alter that a little bit. Okay?
I'll swear, your witness, I'm going to swear in our staff too, because Donna has the common energy to do all this stuff. So, please, raise your hand. Someone swear up for testimony in this spot. True, all true. I think that's true. Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Alan Nick, A-L-A-N-N-I-C-K.
Thank you. All right. And at the same time, you swore in both Donna and Sam, so please state your affiliations with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Sabine Lavacki, Board Assistant.
Okay. So, I just want to clarify the thing about the affordable housing obligation. And Andy's right, under the state, the new fourth round rules, there is no new obligation with the city. It has a rehab obligation, which means there are units that have to be rehabilitated or approved, not new units created in this fourth round. But the city still has its own ordinances that require the creation of affordable housing units, and they have to be a certain distribution and are required to be a certain income level. So, you know, and the city is under an obligation with Perishure Housing Center to continue to pursue new affordable housing units to be developed.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, when I, you know, Beth has come before.
Yeah.
But as I understand it, like, there are scenarios, we have that obligation to fill, and there are plans to, you know, to satisfy that. Supposedly, all these other affordables are, like, in our bucket for future obligations. That's correct, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. The other question is, so then it's up to the city to determine the level of affordability? Because Andy was saying, you know, you know, you read that, it is up to us and the state?
It's up to the city to determine how many of each--
And I'll walk around.
It really needs--
Okay.
So, how many very lows, how many lows, how many mods? Because we anticipate that, you know, we are going to have an obligation in the future once all the waterfront gets built.
Yeah. So, it's--
Or it's suddenly have that--
That would be for the fifth round. I think there was an anticipation, the fourth round, it was going to be an obligation, but it wasn't. So, it's, you're looking at 10 years from now. But any affordable that's built now would get credit for that. Yeah, it's in the bank. And I'd say, the fact that the city requires it, I think, not only is it commendable, I think it should be done, but it-- You know, it's a balance. You're trying to get the projects done so you can build housing, and also have affordable with it. If they don't pencil out and you can't build them, you're not getting anything. So, it's tough, it's not easy.
Yeah. I'm in the business, I know, but so let me ask you about, that this is in the bank, when the state does give us--
If there is--
Why, do they--
Fifth round.
Do they set the level of affordability, or it's still up to us?
No, no, the level of affordability is regional. The different levels, what, you know--
Yeah, the city just basically follows--
They talk to the city. State would just say, "You have your affordable."
The state, what happens is, in the fourth round, they came out and they said, "Okay, different municipalities, this is your obligation." All right? Some municipalities had very large obligations, some just avoided it for years, and all more avoided it for years.
When you say, is that the number of units or affordability?
The number of units, taking into different types of credits, or they can lend credits and whatnot. The percentages of normally, when you're building affordable, falls under what's called UHAC. Those are UHAC standards that divides between the percentage of low, 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 and moderate, also veteran counts that go with that. When you're doing affordable pursuant to the state statute, that's required. Asbury, again, and a lot of, you know, looking ahead, did that, all right? They created that. We're looking for a variance from that scene, there's no obligation now for the fourth round. We're looking for a variance to try to alter that a little bit, to try to get these units going. In terms of the income levels for affordable, that's regional. It's not just Asbury Park. There's a regional set of data that they look at, and they set the affordability limits pursuant to that.
Because that still governs other aspects, so like the rehab component prior rounds, that stuff is still drives things for the city, so we still participate in that.
All right. With that being said, Alan, can you give us the background, your relationship to 700 Monroe Avenue Realty LLC?
Sure. I am a, one of the members of the LLC. I own 15%.
Okay. And you have authority to comment, present the application? Can I?
Okay.
You're familiar with the approval on the project that we're here for tonight, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
And you've been involved in this project since--
2019.
Exactly. And you're familiar with the resolution that provided or required affordable units at the rate 20%, am I correct? We're here to amend that because of the issues that you're having in trying to get this project going, am I correct? Why don't you dive into that a little bit, so you can explain what you're trying to do, trying to get this project going, and the issues that you're facing trying to get it to go?
Sure. I might stumble through this, I don't like public speaking, so just bear with me, and if you have any questions, just let me know. From inception to today, one of the biggest pushes for this was interest rates with banks. When we started this project in 2019, interest rates were significantly lower, thus making construction more affordable. Material today significantly more expensive than what it was in 2019. We didn't anticipate this project taking the time it did. That was at nobody's fault. We changed some things, we had to amend a couple of things as well. We're finding that it doesn't underwrite at all, looking for a construction loan from a bank. At the current rate right now, it looks like we would make our money back in 28 years on this project, which is the biggest concern we have as a developer. If we switch from very low and low to simply include moderate housing, we keep our number of affordable housing, but the project then becomes extremely viable, or more so than just including the low and very low. We don't want to go down in affordable units. We are over one, and that was a miscalculation on our end.
You're, okay, we're keeping that.
Correct. Yeah, we would like that, and we do have some scenarios where we go up one affordable housing unit. So, I know we went over that today.
So, the numbers that you've worked on, if you were to go up to the 56 units as proposed, you can actually go up to 12 affordable if you do moderately, am I correct? Where existing, it's 11, am I correct?
And required, it is 10.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you'd be willing to go up two in order, based upon the numbers, you can reach two more to get moderate?
Yep.
But then you can actually get the numbers to work with the project, am I correct?
Right.
Can I just, I'm sorry, how many units are you asking for? 56?
56 units.
So, then how is that 10?
So, 56--
How is that even 11?
Let me, so, right now, it was 11 at--
Yeah, that was originally.
It was a miscalculation.
Yeah.
Okay, so it should have been 10. All right? So, rightfully, on 56 units, when you do the calculation, it comes to 10.4, you round down for the ordinance, it comes to 10. If you did all moderate, you can go up to 12.
But, but I'm sorry, I thought it was 20%. So, we have 56, 20% is 11.2. So, how is that 10?
That's if we left and went up. So, we have 11 units right now that are affordable.
Right, because you have 50, you're asking for 56.
But we're willing--
Currently approved.
Currently approved is 52. If we go up to 56--
Right.
Right.
The obligation would be 11.
Correct.
We can actually add a unit on top of--
We would go up to 12. We would increase over the requirement once again.
11.2 units.
Right.
Instead of adding down.
The requirement was 10.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want to go down?
I don't know if anybody else recalls, but I don't, I don't recall us, as a planning board, ever determining the levels of two of these, three of these, of affordable versus not affordable versus, I mean, for affordable versus not affordable.
No, it was just whatever was required by the ordinance.
Right, but that's what I don't, that's what I don't understand here.
We're looking for a variance to--
You're asking for variance on the city ordinance?
No.
Well, it's--
It's--
It's a redevelopment.
All right, you want a variance on the state ordinance?
No. It's in the land development regulations in Chapter 30.
Okay.
It says how many, what the breakdown is.
Right, and what the breakdown is.
It's a major redevelopment plan. I have a legal question. Donna, all of this about affordable housing has always been the province of the planning boards, okay? I know very little about it, I follow early. Are we, and is this a variance in the sense of zoning variance, or is it a design exception?
No, it would be a C variance.
Okay, so it's a C variance, and we, under the law, we have the power to grant that because it's in our development regulations?
Yes, as long as it's not--
There is a little bit of asterix on that, because it's still a regulation of the U, and the city still has to basically justify it to DCA. But in my conversations with Beth and our, you know, brains in my office, it's not a, it doesn't have to be a case by case, it's a, you know, when the city does its inherent calculation of all its buckets, of all its projects, if, you know, if it's short in one bucket or not, then it goes to DCA.
So, then based on what you're saying, it's your opinion, we have the power to--
Oh, no, this is actually a section of Chapter 30 that says, yes. It would be a C2 variance.
Yeah, it's a C2 variance, it's no different than a sideburnet setback in that sense. We're not, we're not overstepping our powers or circling something from something the state will say you can't do.
So, I understand, so the requirement, so like, in the waterfront redevelopment area, there's no requirements for affordable housing. But in the Main Street redevelopment--
There's a contribution.
It's because the city council, when we passed that plan, said affordable housing is required. So, that's the law that we're following, was when the city council passed the Main Street redevelopment.
Okay, I got it.
Jeff, I have a question if you, sure. Because you, what you're saying from the past, you know, you're not considering the option. Well, my-- But the way this just went up--
Yeah.
Trying to answer, like, some of my last questions from--
Yeah, you can't go too, you can't get into the specifics of dollars and cents about the application, because that's not relevant to the discussion. I understand what the applicant is saying, they're saying, based on the times, based on tariffs, based on everything that's going on. The project, you can't build it, it won't work, so they need somebody to use in terms of a quantity of units. Now, we have to be careful, because we can't go completely on finances. The law doesn't necessarily recognize that, but we can't delve into asking for, you know, specific questions about return on investments. That's what I'm saying. Yes, exactly.
But I can tell you that, you know, the Denholtz project, that was across the street, that's not, they're not going to build it. Same numbers just don't work.
Well, I know a little bit about that project as well, so it's not that simple.
Well, let's not, let's not--
Let's not talk about things we don't, yeah.
Okay, so I have a question. So, whatever we decide tonight, then has to go back to mayor council?
No.
No.
Well, how, I thought you said it did. So, I thought somebody said it did, because you're violating the ordinance that mayor council set.
Not, no, no, no. It violates UHAC. When, when the city does, so as part of its annual reporting for affordable housing, the city will make a report to DCA, and it'll have to include, you know, if you guys are off by one for however many very low and low units that corresponds to this project, you would have to, you know, basically say, "We need waiver for that" from DCA.
What makes you think the mayor council would be willing to do that?
I don't, but I don't know that you'll actually have to. I don't know if there will be other projects that--
You just said we have to make a report to UHAC, saying like we violated UHAC.
You have to do a report that says what your number is. If your number's balanced, then you say, "We're all good." If you're short in one of your buckets, then you have to ask for a waiver.
But we know this project is going to make us short. We don't know the overall--
We don't know what your overall will be when, when this project actually comes online.
I'm just thinking this, maybe the first process should be going to mayor council and saying, "Are you guys on board with this?" Then we come to this.
So, this can be, you guys still have to do a redevelopment agreement?
Yeah.
So, that's part of what you guys can talk about in giving them their redevelopment agreement, negotiating the pilot, et cetera, regardless of what the Board does.
If you grant this-- This report you're talking about, is that when you get a requirement, the ordinance has to be in the question?
Yes, when you get a requirement.
Yeah, but there's no requirement, there's, and there won't be for 10 years.
We don't know when your project's going to come online. We don't know when or if the Board, the city's going to have anything to report.
All right, so the report you're talking about is, in the event there's a requirement?
Well, they have to report in the next, I mean, it's next year. Yeah, next year, they have to do a report, but because they don't have an obligation, it's just status on their rehab.
Right. Yeah, it's not--
And you're not going to be online anymore.
Yeah, but it's not as though they could reject it, because there's no obligation at this point.
Well, so again, moving forward.
So, somebody has to keep count of it.
That's what they do.
Exactly.
That's why we have a planner, liaisons, a whole, a whole industry.
Just to throw something in here, when the last report was made, which outlined the obligations that the city had, this project had already been approved, and the numbers in that project--
Were not?
The city, under the third round, this project was not identified.
But the fourth round was?
This was not identified in the fourth round, because there was no obligation in the fourth round.
But no obligation took into account that this had already been approved?
No, we didn't, we didn't identify any sites in the fourth round.
I thought when Beth McManus testified before this board, and she made the presentation concerning affordable housing, she took into account all of the affordable housing that had been approved, not necessarily constructed, but had been approved, that's what she said.
Okay, I don't know what she presented, I've, you know, I've related that, but you guys, again, don't have a fourth round obligation. I know what the report says, what your affordable housing, your housing plan says for fourth round.
I, I agree with you, Donna.
It just says it's a rehab obligation.
But, but when she made her presentation.
I, I do know that she is keeping track of all of the approvals, because again, this is something you have to report to the state, because it's all part of also balancing for the complete site and, and what's going on in the waterfront. So these are all calculations that are constantly being monitored.
I, okay, I was under the impression that when she made her calculations and came up with the numbers that said that there was no obligation for the next 10 years for affordable units, that she had taken into account that this number, these number 11 units were also had been counted as, as if they were.
You're half right, you're half right. For this 10 years for fourth round, there is no obligation. But we're looking forward into the next 10, we're thinking about this 11 units, we're thinking about 1201 Memorial, we're thinking about 1001, we're thinking about Den Halls.
We don't have, we don't have an obligation right now, but there is going to be an obligation, and they're going to tell us whatever that number is, and all of these projects that we go, we're doing now will go into that obligation. So we don't satisfy the obligation, we're going to have to find units somewhere to satisfy it.
And there's a world though where this project's units don't count because they don't meet the distribution, right?
This project will count toward the obligation that they're going to give us. I mean, I know it's backwards, but.
No, I understand that, but if, but if the units aren't distributed correctly, then they may not all count because they're not the right ratio.
Cool.
But in the year 2025, we end up with 11 affordable units even if they're okay.
But I, I believe Jim to be correct with what Beth said, and I understand what Jim's saying, is like, if Beth didn't make that report a year ago, two years ago, to UHAC, whoever it is, that X amount of units were coming in, wouldn't we have an obligation?
That's the question.
Yeah, so again, you know.
We'll never know.
Well, as we move forward in time, and again, she's keeping track because we still have to get built. Just, I mean, like Andy said, Den Halls, we've been waiting.
Right, so they don't build, this one doesn't build, this one doesn't build, this one doesn't build, but they reported for round four, come round five, we're going to get it happened.
Exactly.
But you, you said it though, but if they never get built, that's the problem. You're not getting any of the credit.
I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, it sounds like a terrible system where you can report things that haven't been built, but that, that's the way New Jersey's run. I mean, I can't change the law.
Yeah, in, in suburban towns, they're constantly identifying sites as potential. They don't even have approvals, they're just random sites people are talking about can accommodate so many units. And time passes, and time passes, and we're in the fourth round, and however many rounds, you know, they were in the third round plan, it was in their second round plan, and there's still no units built there.
Yeah, you're, there's what's called the RDP, the realistic development potential of the site, you're always looking to see where you can build on sites that are affordable, and it's a moving target a lot of times. I'm trying to figure that out, it's not easy, it's not an easy calculation.
And then, and in the fourth round, they completely upended the whole part, it's a whole new ballgame with how you calculate it. We spent six months figuring it out, we have a whole white paper.
Oh, I haven't even tried.
Yeah.
Well, just another comment, this particular, if I recall correctly, this particular project was given a bonus, was given an extra floor. I think that's one of.
That was a plan amendment.
I'm sorry?
That was a plan amendment.
Yeah, it was done in the form of a plan amendment.
Yeah, yeah, but you don't have.
In order to.
How to get the floor. Right, and they could have done 61 units. Because originally their plan was 61 dwelling units. But they couldn't because of the shape and then how to get the windows to work and whatnot.
Well, sometimes you can't get shit counted.
They couldn't go against 61 units, so now they figured out a way to get 56.
But Jim said they got a bonus in the plan, they got an extra floor because there was affordable housing.
I'm sorry.
They got an extra floor according to the plan amendment because of the.
To provide 20%.
Provide 20% affordable house.
But that does not take into account the mix of affordable, the very low, low.
Listen, I, I've done projects where it gone down to 15%. Now, that should work with Ferris or do it, taking into account, you're not trying to get these numbers to work, but at 15%, you're keeping in there the low and the low low. Is there a bit of a temperature, you know, in doing a lesser percentage with the low and the low low? You're getting the credit, that's the low and the low low, but you're losing what essentially if you were to do here would be two units.
I don't know, I don't know if they can do that deviation, I think that would be a plan amendment.
If they can.
To go from 20 to 15.
Would it be, why?
Because that's, that's not eligible.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you, you won't get a pot at 15%. So I mean, we might as well just put the cards on the table, because the majority of the council has said anything less than 20% doesn't get a pot, so.
Right, so that's the answer to that question.
And you'd have to lose a floor.
So, so let's, let's talk about some of the other things here. So the differences between their original approval is they want to increase the number of units by four. And that's by changing how the units are configured on each floor.
Correct.
And, but there's no other changes to the building.
But, but should, should, should they be?
Yeah, no, 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 I just wanted kind of, do kind of an overview here. Because we kind of got bogged down. Do you want to bring Obi on and describe all the architectural changes or?
Sure.
The lawyer, this witness.
Okay.
This lawyer, this is John, Donna.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Questions for the board?
No.
So, well, let me ask you, yes, if you, if you got, if you got the loan, if you were seeking, what's the, what's this capable of building?
We have construction drawings, we would just have to take it to a bank, have it underwritten, and go.
Well, do you, do you have it, so with the changes you're seeking, will it underwrite correctly?
Yes.
And your confidence, or which your, which your confidence level of receiving is sufficient in construction?
I couldn't answer for the banks, but it does underwrite well.
Well, I'm asking you about your confidence.
I think it'll, I think a loan would come through and we would be able to build.
And like when would you, when do you think this will all take place and have completion?
It depends on when we can get permits.
They still have to go through.
It's a resolution, compliance.
You, you've doubled, you've doubled.
A year, which would be less, which would be fair.
I, I think we'd be able to get resolution, compliance, and redevelopment agreement for near 20% to pilot application, I can probably get that then, done in eight months in a year.
The reason why I'm asking is because you're saying like with the Den Halls, you know, we prove something and then somebody else comes back, you can't make your IOR, and you know, we've pushed the fence out this far and then come back again, you know, and pushing it further, so.
Now, the, the plans, aside from the interior land, which we're going to have, we testify to, the plans are not going to change for terms of the site plan itself.
So is someone else going to, I just want to know from this witness, will anyone else be speaking about what the mix of the housing that you're looking for?
Moderate.
Someone else is going to do that, or we've done that already?
You're right, you said.
Okay, tell me, go through it, go through it with me.
Do you mean the mix of the bedrooms or mix of the income distribution?
The mix, the change from the old income distribution to the new income distribution, which is the variance that you're looking for. So I am not clear on what that is.
They would all be moderate, am I correct?
Yes.
So you're saying that the 11 units would all be moderate?
We would go to 12 if we did 56, we would go to 12, and they would be all moderate.
And what was it before?
It was.
You had, in the 11 that you had, based upon UHAC, the 11 units, you can't have more than 20%, that's one bedrooms, you need on two bedrooms, 30% minimum, three bedrooms, 20% minimum.
No, but it tends to be moderate, low, low.
We, we had before, we had the.
It's on, it's on page six of the CCH report.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
That's the current distributions.
Yeah, but that would have.
All right, so. I feel I need to know what I'm voting on, because I, I have to say I don't get it.
Let me just do the math.
Yeah, so we had before, you had the low was one, one bedroom, the low and the very low, the low and very low before, two bedroom, you had three units, three two bedroom, and before you had three, I'm sorry, two, three bedrooms.
So how many is that, like total number of low and low?
So that was three fourth, that was six.
That was six very low low.
Yeah, because it has to be 50% for the low and the very low, so it was six units.
And there remained the low moderate?
You got the five with the moderate, correct.
That's not the.
The actually variance request is to change from the six and five to 12 moderates.
12 moderate, correct.
Totally, we look at 11, 12, three moderates.
12 moderates, and would, would that mean that all the numbers of the two bed, the two, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom would remain the same? So one bedroom would be two, two bedrooms would be six, three bedrooms would be three or four, what, where's the 12? How's that broken out?
We, I just said we would have to figure that out, so.
Well, I think that that would like kind of help us, because we would be looking, because we're looking at, Obi's going to be show us.
A two bedroom is easy enough.
Okay, so tell me, so tell me again, so we're going to be doing two one bedroom? Seven two bedrooms?
No, it would be one, one bedroom.
One one bedroom for moderate.
You're right, you're right.
Two one bedrooms.
Two one bedrooms.
Right.
Six two bedrooms.
It would be seven because he just added one.
If there, if it's going to be a two.
Right. And three?
Three threes.
Seven twos.
Seven twos.
And two ones.
Two ones.
Can you, can you, but I don't.
Oh, dear.
That's why you get almost.
So we're in region four or whatever with New Brunswick and everything, and then there's a chart.
Correct.
For dollar amounts for very low, low, and moderate, did anybody bring that tonight? What's the dollar amount? Matters to me.
That's only for this year.
Okay, well.
We don't know what it's going to be next year.
It's not going to, it's not going to go crazy, it's going to be fairly consistent.
What, what is the?
Well, I just, we wanted to know that, I think John wanted to know the magnitude of, when you go from a low to a moderate, so for instance, what's the low on a one bedroom versus a moderate on a one bedroom?
Thank you.
Okay.
What's, what's the comparison?
Give me a sec, I'll look it up.
Just right, yeah, right now, right.
Because I know what's the very low versus moderate.
Here we go.
And so what did it look like before?
Oh, what do you mean, for this?
Who was 11?
Who was 11 before also?
Chuck. That's from Beth, from June of this year.
There's a 40%.
It's a big difference.
Big difference.
What's the very low versus the moderate?
Yeah, so this is from Beth's presentation to us and to the council in June of this year. So for a one bedroom, a very low is 550, a low is 1040, and a moderate is 1280.
That's very significant.
Go to a direct.
So for two, a very low is 615, a low is 1200, and a moderate is 1590. And for a three bedroom, a very low is 750, a low is 1430, and a moderate is 1760.
Since we're relying on outside information, where, what is this, what are your reference?
This was, yep, yep, this was from Beth McManus, it was a presentation to the planning board made when we did the housing share and fair element for 2025. It's the, it's the region for Monmouth Mercer and Ocean Counties, example rents for affordable homes.
Okay.
Does it indicate in there the percentage based upon the median income? In terms of the levels?
Yes, it says moderate, sorry, my thing is popping up, my AI thing is popping up, which is covering up what I need to see. Moderate, it says it's 51 to 80%, low is 30 to 49, and very low is less than 30.
I guess as long as you're asking a question, what would a market rate need to go for?
Per square foot? North of $45 a square foot.
Which average shows?
Uh, let's say three grand for a two bedroom.
Is there, so it sounds like, you know, someone on the council, like, is there any way to make this pencil out without a, I hate to use the word token, but, you know, to have some low or very low in there?
I wouldn't be able to go up to 12 units if I did that. I would prefer to, I would prefer to stay at 52 units, go down to 10 affordable housing units, but I don't want to go down, I don't want to remove affordable housing units from the city. I prefer to stay at 11 or go up to 12.
Listen, this is totally foreign to me because I'm not.
What I'm going to suggest is that if you feel, and we don't get more from the applicant, you feel the applicant has justification for the variance, it is ultimately up to the governing body to decide what the city needs on income and bedroom distribution. And it still needs to negotiate with the applicant as part of its redevelopment agreement and pilot agreement to figure out what it needs from this project.
So we would be, to be clear, what are we, what would, in this one item, what are we vote, what would we be voting on? Are we voting on no very low and no low and just moderate and going to 12?
Allowing the governing body to determine the distribution.
Oh, yeah.
So we would make a decision subject to the approval of the governing body?
But don't we have to decide if it's going to be 52 or 56 units?
Well, it really doesn't require authority to determine anything based on the political assets, how much money they're going to.
Right, criteria is for variances, and relief is not economics.
That's, that's.
But the governing body could take that into consideration completely.
I understand that, but.
As well as understanding what it needs.
I understand that, but as a board, we, you know, members, we're being, we're being put in a hard position here because we have somebody coming here saying is what, based upon the law, what they want the variance from, that they're telling us it's in our power that they can't make it economic, then we're not allowed to ask any economic questions, and then I don't even understand how we say, okay, yeah, you can do all medium, but then the council says no, so why, you don't have the power, why are you being asked this question if we can't say what the compromise is?
Should this be an amendment to the plan?
I was told to come here for energy.
Yeah, we're really totally new ground, guys. My, I didn't even want to do Americans, so.
No, no, I, I.
I was, I was surprised.
I was overruled.
I'm board council.
I was surprised.
I don't care what anybody said inside that building, okay? I've been at this since 1977, okay? I've been doing land use law a long time. This does not sound to me like a variance case at all or a design exception. Planning board has jurisdiction to grant through site plan approval, has secondary jurisdiction to grant both variances and the nature of both variances and design exceptions and design waivers. So criteria for granting those variances has been drilled into my head since I was in law school, is not economics, so.
That's a hardship, because it's a hardship.
That we're, we're.
It's not a hardship.
It's not a hardship in the zoning case, it's a hardship financial, I know what you're saying, yeah.
But under, under, it's not a hardship, yes.
I'm starting to lean in the direction that this is, this is a plan amendment. If you're going to ask the county, we give an approval that's subject, we don't, we don't give away our power to give approvals to the mayor and council, with all due respect, but you. When you do your work and you've granted a variance, they can't alter our variance, right? They may have power over possibly a D one.
Can I be entirely honest?
Yes.
I was prepared to do a plan amendment. I was told to come here for that.
Okay, so, but we, we need to do a plant, a site plan amendment for the number of units, and you do need a design exception for parking to accommodate that, and that is for the board to consider. And if they don't think you can accommodate the parking negative impacts by having more dwelling units, then you don't have to go anywhere. But I would.
We could seek the relief for the fifty-six units, and then I can go for the plan amendment and discuss with the council.
Would it make any sense to do that? Y'all were putting the cart before the horse. Shouldn't it be the council, because if the council doesn't give you a green light, what are we, why are we hearing an expansion of the unit number and then granting a variance or something and the council hasn't approved it? It's not going anywhere, it's not anymore our decision.
I think not being a lawyer, not doing this in nineteen seventy-seven, that's why I said a half hour ago. Shouldn't have gone to council first?
Yeah, that's, I'm coming out on that, because none of it's making any sense to me.
I've never been before a board and told to come for variance, because we for the number of.
Yeah, I, I, me neither, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not buying this.
Again, it's.
I don't think the ones that precedent for the state or the jurisdiction.
I don't think we do.
Right, because even if we approved this, right, I would only be comfortable voting, I don't know which way I would vote, but I'd only be comfortable voting yes, knowing that I had to go back before the council, because I don't want to prove something, knowing that we could be doing wrong by the city, what the city needs, what the cities require, and I don't have that knowledge. The council does, I hope.
Right, because, because, because you're really saying that you don't really have to come in front of us if, if with the expansion, essentially, in the end.
The one thing I would like to do, just for present purposes, is to correct the eleven affordable to ten, what it should be. Just to have in a resolution pass that based upon the ordinance, that the original approval for the eleven units should have been ten, based upon your ordinance, the way you do the calculations, that was known.
Is that correct?
No, because it was ten point two, we rounded up. Yeah, it was ten point four.
As long as Donna says that's correct, then we can, we can, that certainly we can do, we can correct it now.
If that's what you want to change your plan to.
I, I, I would like the resolution corrected to reflect that, um, but I, I don't disagree with you that ultimately we got to go before the mayor and council.
It never, it never comes this way, it never comes to us first, then to the mayor and council, except for maybe an encroachment into a right of way, which is perfunctively, okay? An, an extension of a boundary over a sidewalk or something, but in terms of all of this complicated housing stuff, that, that's got to, that's, you got to start at the, in the base of original jurisdiction, which is the mayor and council.
Fallowing borders.
Okay, well.
Sounds like he trucked. Sounds like he trucked.
I, I was told to come here.
Okay. All right, so then we don't have to go through the fifty-two versus fifty-six?
No.
We don't have to go through the parking?
Because how am I going to, how am I going to, how am I going to instruct you to, to decide this on traditional variant, criteria for variance in any way that's not going to get you into the economics of this project? And there's tons of cases where it says economics is no valid reason for granting a variance. Andy knows it, Donna knows it, we all know. So I think the most logical thing is this belongs with the mayor and council first, and if they say good, then at least the planning board, it's not a guarantee that they're going to grant your variance relief, but at least we'll know we're not stepping on their toes and usurping any of their, their powers.
Or, yes, committing the city to something.
Yeah, yeah, because once we've done something, then we're going to undo it, file an appeal, go at odds with the mayor and council, no, that's, that's a avenue I want to go now.
All right, so the only type request is just that the resolution be corrected to reflect the ten units.
Okay. So you supplement it?
Jack, does that, does that present a problem later on? I mean, shouldn't we, shouldn't this all be taken care of at one time, rather than?
If we know there was a mathematical error in the original resolution, it's been brought to our attention, and you, and Donna tells us the ordinance should be, the ordinance should have required us to go down instead of up, that's.
It's an error that was, that we made.
There's no reason not to.
Somebody, whoever.
Oh, I take blame.
You did that, that was us.
Whatever, it happens. We can, we have the power to correct that, that's simple enough.
So is that what you're asking for?
For tonight.
For tonight? So everything else is null and.
I'm going to go before the mayor and council, have that conversation, yeah.
That changes all the parking requirements and other things.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
No, it doesn't.
Changing the eleven to ten?
Might require one more spot.
No, God, the, uh, four thousand doesn't.
It does require parking.
Doesn't require parking.
Right, that's, that's all we're, we're doing, is fixing the resolution.
But if we had eleven affordable units that didn't require parking, and we're adding a market rate change, which would require parking.
Right, so, so the parking requirement changes.
Yes.
So tell us, let's go through that.
It'd be.
Because you're asking for two things.
Yeah, it would be point nine is the additional deviation.
So how much was, uh, how much were you short before?
We have twenty, six parking spaces, that includes the six EV and how many units?
So what, it was required, was, I think, what, thirty-five was required, but now thirty-six are required?
That's correct, fifty-two minus ten would be forty-two times zero point nine.
Thirty-seven.
Forty-two times point nine would be thirty, thirty-seven point eight, thirty-eight spaces.
So thirty-eight spaces minus twenty-six that you actually have.
And we get the EV credit on that.
Right, right, because you actually, the prior application was twenty-six.
Thirty-eight and then minus three for the EV comes down to thirty-five.
But you needed two spaces for the commercial.
That was under.
Spaces per thousand per feet.
Oh, that's CBD.
Yeah, CBD, um, so there were two for the commercial, thirty-seven for the residential, which add one basically, so forty for the total, get the, get three EV credits.
So it took thirty-seven.
And you only have twenty-six spaces.
Twenty-six provided versus thirty-six required? Thirty-seven, sorry.
That is correct.
And how, that's being corrected from the original?
That's, yeah.
That's what we're correcting the resolution.
Originally, what did we have in the resolution?
We had twenty-six parking spaces.
Okay.
And six EV.
Okay.
But, but that meant that you were nine short, because we, because we're concerned about the short, not necessarily what you needed.
Well, you're in with four spaces, but.
Exactly, they're adding one space.
Yeah, the requirement.
We have, we have point nine additional.
No, 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 not four, not times four.
We're keeping the amount of units, right?
Everything's staying the same. The only thing that they're saying is that they want to fix the calculation that was incorrect.
Yep.
To ten units affordable, that means one unit goes into the norm, into the normal bucket.
Okay, uh, you're correct, I, I, we're not discussing the four different.
Correct, correct, correct. Okay, so can we go over once again, how many were, we were short, and how many are we short now? Because I believe.
It was thirty-nine, now it's forty, so it's, it's one space.
Okay, but.
Okay, I meant, uh, number thirty, number thirty-four on the resolution says the applicant will provide twenty-six off-peak parking spaces, includes of six EV parking spaces and handicap spaces. Uh, even though thirty-five spaces are required after reductions, so we went, previously we said thirty-five were required, there's twenty-six provided.
Right, and so we're not, we were nine short, that was the resolution that was approved, so now we're ten short.
Correct.
So now we're ten short. So then, so we, we as a board have to agree whether we're okay with the ten being short, and as part of that also, that we're adding, I mean, we're removing, we're fixing the calculation.
Correct.
Those are the two things.
We're not, we're not granting any additional relief, we're just clarifying, fixing two errors, essentially.
Fixing an error, yes, and.
In the unit count, affordable unit count and in the parking calculation, correct?
It's the, it's the affordable unit count, yes, from eleven to ten, and then the, these amount of spaces that.
Goes up.
Goes up by one, so it was nine, now it's ten, short, because I always look at it what's short, not, not all the other things, so. We originally approved nine, the applicant is now asking for ten.
That's a correction.
Correct, that's a correction, but, but we, we approved nine, knowing it was nine. Now we're, now, now it's ten, based on the fixed.
Based upon the mixed calculation.
That's right, based on the fixed calculation, yes.
So is it going to be one vote for both or one for each?
Well, if you vote, if you approve one, I think it is to approve the other.
Is the second one's calculated as the first?
They, they do go hand in hand, unfortunately, they do, one's a function of the other.
Want to make sure, just to have an opportunity to ask questions.
Yep. Do we, uh, just, just, just one second, if you don't mind?
We'll get you.
Just one, all right, so this applicant, the applicant has finished his testimony, planning board has asked their questions. Would you like public to ask a question of this gentleman? Would you like to ask a question of him? Okay.
Please identify, go back to the microphone and identify yourself, please, and.
I'm Nikesh Jain, owner of immediate neighbor seven oh two Monroe Avenue.
And I saw you carry an interval, that was the notice of tonight's hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead, ask the gentleman the question.
So I, I just want to know what will be impact on my property, because I, first time I got the notice, I did not, you got all the approval, I did not know anything.
Something about your property?
No, no, what will be impact on my property, like the, the side and all the, about the.
Impact on your property?
Yeah. Seven oh two.
Seven oh two.
Because right now it's empty, right, and fifty-six new owner will be coming.
It's going to be a new development.
Yeah, so.
I, I can't say what impact.
What, maybe from the sun wise and all, all, all those things that.
We were ready to send with that. You know what, that's, that's outside the scope of this, however, we'll have you talk to the planner tomorrow, where perhaps she can help you.
Okay.
Okay.
So and then fifty, fifty-four to fifty-six, right, are you changing the floor plan or the, or your?
We're keeping at fifty-two.
Fifty, okay.
For now.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do, um, do any of the planning board members have any comments that they would like to make about this? No?
So, phrase a resolution?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, we can all vote, I spoke to Andy about new members, old members, yeah, as a matter of judicial necessity.
All right, I do have to ask, does the public have any comments that they would like to make? All right, open for public.
So moved.
No?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Close for public, or do you have?
If you, if you want to make an additional comment, you're allowed at this time.
So, so I just.
That's okay.
All right, now, you're, you're making a statement now, you're not asking questions. I'll swear your right hand, so I'll swear affirming testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth.
I do, yes.
You did?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, and please state your name again for the right.
Nikesh Jain, I'm the owner of seven oh two Monroe Avenue.
Where do I, you put your hand there.
Okay.
So, so mixed property, you are going to put some, uh, commercial stuff over there, so what the commercial, uh, in the convenience store, or what, what the kind of the commercial store you're planning, are you looking?
No, at this point, we just have to make a statement, if you have a, a thought that you want, it's not a question, we can't answer questions.
You need to ask questions, now, if you want to make a comment, you can make a comment.
Okay, so.
And if not, then.
That's okay, you don't have to, it's okay.
The only problem I have, like, the parking space, right, I, I do not have the parking space on my, my area, so my tenant usually park outside. What, I don't know, maybe fifty-six new owner, they, they all park outside or, or, or they will, how will be the allocation, like, you already mentioned, like, thirty-seven only parking available, including the two commercial shop. So most of the other owner, maybe they'll park outside, so how, how will be the impact on that whole small road?
All of that was unfortunately already discussed in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-two, but I think that whatever Donna can help you with, um, tomorrow, whenever you call her, that she can have a discussion about that, but.
First time I got this notice, so I.
I understand, I, well, we appreciate you coming, because, because public participation is a good thing, but thank you. All right, motion to close public?
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
I say, okay, yeah, the resolution.
Yeah.
Do you have comments from the planning board?
Sure.
Yeah.
Would it be correct for me to say that the applicant does not know what's going to be in the commercial space at this time?
Correct.
That's why it couldn't be answered. Thank you.
So the, they don't know what commercial use to be that works?
That hasn't been decided yet. It will impact the geography, right, like what kind of a shitty bitty shop or something, I don't know.
Yeah, they don't know yet, they don't know yet. Okay?
Any further discussions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, for the resolution, so.
Do you need to tell me what the motion's going to be?
We're looking, I believe that we're looking for a motion to, to, uh, fix the, uh, the calculation for affordable housing that was calculated in, in error. And as a result of that, the, um, the parking number required, uh, increases by, by point nine. And therefore, we have to approve ten spaces that are short as opposed to the nine, and I'm sure there's a calculation that probably would be better than what I just said, but I think that that's pretty just clear. It used to be nine, now it has to be ten as a result of fixing the calculation that was made in error.
Okay, a motion to correct the original affordable housing calculation from eleven units to ten, which results in ten parking space shortage versus nine.
Correct, correct.
In the resolution, in the actual.
Do we, as the planning board, need to be voting on the distribution not of income levels, but of unit types? So if we're going from eleven down to ten, you know, there's only going to be ten units, so is it going to be, is two one bedrooms still, is it going to be two?
It's statutory, it's statutory.
Okay, so we can just say according to the statute, we'll comply with the statute, perfect, then let's include that, compliant with statute. Great.
Jack, should we say that?
What do you want, Michael, run that by me?
Just that the distribution of, of unit types, bed, with the number of bedrooms, is compliant with the statute.
Recertain to the UHAP standard.
Yeah.
So that should be universal.
Because previously, when it was eleven units, we said specifically it was two one bedrooms, six two bedrooms.
We believe it's already in there?
Yes.
All right, so then just the substance.
Great.
Well, just make sure.
Thanks, Jack.
Okay. Okay.
Jack, I was just going to say, when we correct that, uh, eleven to ten, should we just say that was the calculation made in error?
Yeah, it's an error that was made.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Is that a motion? So move. Dan?
Have to repeat it?
No. I got it.
I'll second.
And Michael's seconded?
Um, Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Kathy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kurzak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have a? No, you never know what is going to come. Motion, motion to adjourn. Aye. All in favor, not opposed?
Aye.
Have a great night.